To that, as the Chair of the Housing Authority, but before I do, let me just put context on here since we now have Commissioner Beckles and also Solario joining us. Just in terms of protocol, since we're doing this by teleconference, please keep your phone muted until or unless you speak. You will need to unmute it when we do roll call and/or any voting items because we're going to do a roll call vote, person by person, which the city clerk will call us out for that. So with that, I'll go ahead and hand it over to that to get the Housing Authority started.
Certainly. I now call the Housing Authority into session. Madam Clerk, could you please roll call?
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Bredegum?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Klaffenstein?
Here.
Commissioner Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Solario?
Here.
Vice Chair Kim Wynn?
Here.
And Chair Bowie?
Here. I now would like to open oral communications. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments?
Chair Bowie, there is no one who has requested to speak under oral communications.
I now then close oral communication and move to consent items after item on the consent.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, let's call the vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredegum?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Solario?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
We now move to a public hearing with item 3A. Mr. Danny Wynn?
Item 3A is adoption of the Garden Grove Housing Authority, five-year and annual plan for fiscal years 2020 and 2024. And Mr. Wynn is here to give the report.
Yes, hi, this is Daniel Wynn. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is the Garden Grove Housing Authority, five-year and annual plan. The plan is comprehensive guide to the housing authority policies, operations, and strategies for meeting local housing needs and goals. The Housing Authority is required to submit this plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development prior to April 17. In 2019, the Housing Authority received a CMAP score of 100%. CMAP is the Domination of Self-Audit and Data Submission to HUD that measures the performance of the Housing Authority. A score of 100% qualifies the Housing Authority as a high-performing agency, and as a high-performing agency where only required to complete a streamlined format of the plan. The Housing Authority is rated as a high performer over the past five years and utilize nearly 100% of funding from HUD to administer the program and assist families to rent their system. Staff receive training on customer service skills and courses on eligibility requirements and rent calculations and annual examinations. The inspection staff completed housing quality standards training. They also receive ongoing support and training in local codes from City Building Division. The supervisory staff receives training on supervision and management, basic third housing policies, and financial management. The Housing Authority also participated in various outreach activities to explain and promote the Housing Choice Voucher Program. Non-English staff are available to work with community groups to serve non-English speaking populations. Eligibility interviews, briefing sessions, and inspections are conducted in English, Vietnamese, and Spanish so that participants are able to access the program fully. The Garden Grove Housing Authority worked steps to maintain our high-performing rating. We will continue our goal of providing excellent customer service by continuous assessment of policies and procedures to ensure we are effectively serving our communities. Additionally, we will continue to administer the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, a program that is designed to encourage participants for career development and self-reliance. A resident advisory board comprised of six tenant participants of the Housing Choice Voucher Program have reviewed the plan, and their comments are attached. The public hearing has been properly noticed on January 8th and the 15th. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Commission conduct the public hearing and adopt the 2020, 2024 five-year and annual plan. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Question from colleagues? Hearing on, I now open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to address the Housing Authority on this item 3A?
Chair Bowie, there are no speakers.
I now close the public hearing on item 3A. Madam Clerk, unless there's any other comment by the board member, Madam Clerk, could you please open the vote?
I'll make a motion. This is, I'm trying to think what I am, Commissioner Jones.
Do we have a first? Do we have a second?
I'll second it, O'Neil.
Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredegum?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Does that mean? Yes.
Commissioner Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Solario?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kim Wynn?
Yes.
And Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
And that's the only public hearing items. We now move to matter from the Chair, our Commissioners and Directors. Colleagues? Anything?
No.
I guess not. I have one item. We are in a state of emergency, and people are very worried, especially tenants who may not have the financial to pay for their rent. I would like to suggest that we ask our Public Director, Danny Wynn, to consider discussing with HUD to see if they would entertain an idea where they would have temporary vouchers to assist those tenants who might be in this grasp, financial distress because of the coronavirus emergency, that temporary voucher would then be used to assist with temporary payments until after the state of emergency is resolved. And I would like to entertain some of my colleagues to see if we want to direct Mr. Wynn to explore that possibility with HUD.
I'll second that.
So Omar, this is Chair Bowie again. What do we need to do? So do we need to call for the vote to authorize and direct Mr. Wynn to move forward with that?
Yeah, unfortunately, that item is not on the agenda. This is Omar, City Attorney. The matter is not on the agenda, so you cannot really take a vote or have discussion on it, but I think that Director Wynn heard the suggestion, and I'm pretty sure he will agree is a good one, so we don't really need the Board to take any formal action.
Okay. So if he decide that is a good thing, he could just take on that and work directly with HUD and see if they would entertain some kind of, you know, solution?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is Danny Wynn. Yeah, I will be happy to do that. In the past several days, I have been in communication with HUD, and also I have written emails to our local Congress offices actually stating that as they are working currently on the stimulus package, to consider that additional funding for housing is critical, and so we are pushing for that as well because of current program right now, we are predicting because so many of our current tenants currently lost jobs, that means that the Housing Authority will and will pay a larger portion of their rent, possibly the whole rent, so we are predicting that our expense will go up quite a bit, and so we are in constant contact and discussion with HUD and as well with local Congress offices.
This is Chairman Bowie again. I think that is a very good idea, but I want to find out that there are two venues that I would like you to explore with HUD. One is to increase the funding for existing applicants in our programs. The other is a consideration of a new programs in which we would have fund to help the victim of coronavirus, if they are layoff or they are under stress because of the coronavirus emergency, whether or not they are in the program, it doesn't matter, but see if Congress and HUD can give us some help in helping those tenants, even if they are not in the program, but if they are under hardship by coronavirus emergency, then we'll be able to give them temporary help for a few months, and then when the emergency is resolved, then they will not be eligible for further assistance.
Oh, yes, I will be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other matters from the Commission? Hearing on, I now adjourn the Housing Authority meeting and back to the City Council.
Thank you. Mayor Jones here. I'd like to convene the Garden Grove City Council meeting of May 24th. Before I go to roll, let me just address if Commissioner Beckles and Commissioner Solario are still there, you're welcome to stand and join us, but otherwise, you're also welcome to change out of your fancy business attire, back into your pajamas, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Have a great evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, City Clerk, would you like to call a roll?
Councilmember Bredegum?
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Protem O'Neil?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. And before we get started, I would like to still do the formality of honoring our great country by asking everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the best of intentions? We pulled that one off. Okay. We will now go to presentations. We have one presentation scheduled, which is a Coronavirus Emergency Operation Command Update as presented by City Manager Sestiles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. I want to take about, I'm going to take about 10 minutes going through several of the actions that the City of Garden Grove has been involved in over the past seven, eight days since we've declared our local emergency, so I'm going to walk you through some of those items, and then we'll be available for questions after that. So let me just start, and a lot of this is for the benefit of the public too that is listening in. So I want to begin by saying on Wednesday, February 26, 2020, Orange County proclaimed a local emergency in response to COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic. In accordance with the state and county response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the City of Garden Grove has undertaken immediate health and safety measures aimed at reducing the spread and risks associated with the virus. The city has been closely monitoring state and county directives and guidelines to protect public health and slow the spread of COVID-19 in Garden Grove. As of this afternoon, the Orange County Health Agency is reporting 152 positive cases of COVID-19 in the county, and unfortunately, with our first death reported this afternoon, that's of a 70-year-old male, an Orange County resident with underlying health conditions. I do want to mention that the Orange County Healthcare Agency website is ochealthinfo.com, where all of the latest news, FAQs, infographics, and guidance can be found regarding the COVID-19 pandemic from the Orange County standpoint. From the City of Garden Grove's standpoint, it should be emphasized that the city is open, functioning, and delivering critical services, albeit under restricted conditions. I want to say that our Garden Grove Police Department, Orange County Fire Authority, and paramedics, EMTs are fully staffed for first response. Our Public Works personnel are on the job and maintaining important infrastructure throughout the community. Community Services continues to provide meals to seniors and children. The city also has a robust website, ggcity.org, that is constantly being updated to help provide COVID-19 information to the community. And with this goal in mind, I want to share some chronological information on the activities that the City of Garden Grove has undertaken since the Orange County Local Emergency Proclamation was issued. So beginning on March 16, 2020, we activated our Emergency Operations Center at 8:30 in the morning in response to the countywide EOC activation, and that's in effect for us, in effect Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 5:30, with additional guidance from our EOC Director throughout the evening and weekend hours. Our Police Chief, Tom DeRay, has been designated as our EOC Director. I have been designated as the Deputy EOC Director, and our Garden Grove Police Department is on heightened alert to public safety issues. We established on the 16th, the Modified City Hall Lobby and Public Counter to implement social distancing. We closed the Public Works Municipal Service Center on 13802 New Hope to the public and shifted service and business to online, by mail, email, or mail services with the department. We modified the Housing Authority Office, shifting service and business to online, by telephone, email, or mail service. We established emergency childcare services for Garden Grove staff at the Garden Grove Community Meeting Center, and we closed the following city facilities to the public. The H. Lewis Lake Senior Center, and I will say that the city will continue to provide seniors and is continuing to provide seniors with take-home meals on a first-come, first-served basis, and the city is continuing to run its Meals on Wheels program. We've closed the Atlantis Play Center, the Garden Grove Sports and Recreation Center, the Garden Grove Community Meeting Center, the Garden Grove Courtyard Center, the Boyne and Clinton Youth and Family Center, but there I want to mention that our Kids Lunch Program is continuing with Second Harvest. We've closed the Magnolia Park Family Resource Center. The OCFA fire stations have been closed to the public. Residents will have access to sandbags at Stations 82, 83, and 84, should that be necessary. Additional city facilities, including the Gym Theater and the Amphitheater, have been closed. We've canceled the following classes and programs involving the Tiny Tot Program with Community Services. And we canceled and postponed the following city-sponsored events. The March 21 compost giveaway was canceled. The April 11 excavation event has been canceled. The April 18 Magnolia Park Family Resource Center 20th Anniversary Event has been canceled for possible rescheduling. Our May 21 Call to Duty Police Memorial has been canceled. Our May 26 Garden Grove College Graduates Reception Event has been canceled, and on May 22 through the 25, the Strawberry Stomp and Strawberry Festival was canceled by the Strawberry Festival Board and the Sister City Association. On the 16th, a local emergency was declared by the City Manager to take effect at 12:01 a.m. on March 17, 2020, to go into, to remain in effect for seven days, and upon ratification of it this evening by the City Council, that will then go into effect for another 60 days. On March 17, 2020, a social distancing directive was issued by the Orange County Health Officer, strongly recommending residents to avoid all public and private gatherings until 11:59 p.m. on March 31, 2020. At that time, the city temporarily suspended street sweeping citations and water utility shut-offs in our city. On March 18, the City Hall Public Counter was closed to the public for walk-in service in response to the directive from the local health officer, shifting service and business online, by telephone, email, or mail. And again, our community can visit ggcity.org, our coronavirus link to access all the information and telephone numbers necessary to conduct business. We directed staff to conduct all meetings remotely via conference call, and we directed department directors to begin drafting telecommuting plans in order to reduce the number of staff reporting to City Hall. On March 19, 2020, the statewide Shelter in Place Executive Order was issued by California Governor Newsom, and at that time, we prepared and approved temporary telecommuting guidelines to further reduce staffing at City Hall. We issued a temporary suspension on the hours and operation of deliveries to businesses and establishments engaged in essential services. So for example, this gives resuppliers, truckers, delivery vehicles more flexibility to get goods delivered to our grocers, large retailers, and to other essential businesses. We established a link on the city's webpage promoting local restaurants that are open for carryout orders. And we're beginning a partnership with Anaheim, Laguna Beach, Buena Park, the Anaheim Convention Chamber of Commerce, Visit Anaheim, and other cities to be prepared to address tourism and entertainment recovery. On March 20, we closed park amenities, including playground equipment, outdoor fitness equipment, basketball and tennis courts, and restrooms. The community is encouraged to enjoy green space recreation while maintaining social distancing. On March 21, 2020, we drafted and established COVID-19 employer exposure procedures, and we increased further activation of telecommuting options. To date, more than 100 city employees are now working in telecommuting assignments. And as of yesterday, March 23, 2020, we temporarily closed the Willawick Golf Course for turf maintenance with the potential to reopen at a later date depending on social distancing practices. We clarified questions as to whether martial law is in effect in Garden Grove. The answer to that is no. Garden Grove Police Department will be educating the community about the stay-at-home order rather than enforcing whenever possible. However, for businesses that are not following the guidance of the Garden Grove Police Department, they may be subject to citations in the future if after several attempts at educating, that that education, those education suggestions are not followed. We're continuing to emphasize that panic buying, stockpiling is not necessary. The food supply chain is strong, and we're starting to see some reductions in shopping lines, and I want to mention that helps our officers and frees them up for additional police visibility throughout our community. We are actively awaiting guidance on the federal and from the federal and state small business assistant recovery plans that will be offered so we can get information shared throughout our community. And I want to remind Councilmembers, you were able to approve in our current fiscal year budget $75,000 in our CDBT loan program through the Small Business Administration. We are working, our Economic Development Department is working on a Garden Grove Relief and Resiliency Plan that we want to share with you by April 1st, and we also have per year approval, $100,000 in the next fiscal year for this same loan program that will probably be converted to a recommended grant program. And as I mentioned, we're waiting on Congress and the state to release their programs for small businesses, and we certainly want to take advantage of any of that and make that available. And then finally, we have built informational links on our website from the state of California and other sources that will offer guidance on applications for unemployment, disability benefits, and paid family leave. In short, the city continues to take aggressive and proactive steps to address the COVID-19 pandemic. The health and safety of our Garden Grove community is our top priority. With me here, that concludes my update. Councilmembers, I'm available for questions, as is Police Chief DeRay, who is with me and who also serves as our EOC Director. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We will now move on to oral communications. Madam Clerk, are there any cards or anyone present wishing to speak?
We have, we have no one present to speak, but we did receive three emails. We received an email from Lynn Lindsay, and she is expressing concern about adopting the resolution under Agenda Item 4A. She is concerned about the city favoring some citizens in terms of a moratorium on evictions. The other writer that we have, the other email that we have is from Sabia Khan, and she is in support of a moratorium on evictions. And we also had two people who posted on social media, and one person, her name is Julie Bruton, and she is looking for some support, and she's concerned about being unemployed during the COVID virus emergency. And also, Mr. Taylor, Don Taylor, also submitted a comment asking about the governor's executive order and protections for renters and homeowners. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, then we will close oral communications. Next, we're going to recess and conduct other legislative bodies. We have two to do, so first, I'll So first, I'll hand it over to President Fat Buie to do the sanitary district. And then after you close, if you could send it over to the successor agency thereafter. Or did I do that? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 we'll do sanitary district first. So take it away, President Buie.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that I was on mute, my apologies. But give me, give me a minute here, let me move to that section. Sure. Okay. All right, I now call the sanitary district into order. Madam Clerk, could you please roll call?
Member Bright, Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Deidra Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
President Buie?
Here. Oral communication has been done simultaneously with other legislative bodies, so we will move right into Consent Item 2A. Receive a five-minute form, the meeting held on February 25.
Move approval.
Second. Madam Clerk? Could please call for the vote?
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidra Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neill?
Yes.
And President Buie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, any matters? Turning on, I now adjourn the sanitary district and back to the city council.
Okay, I'll take us over to the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidra Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Buie?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here, two quick reminders, protocol reminders. Keep on mute whenever you're not engaged. And second of all, if you make a motion or a second, please state your name so that the city clerk can capture who does that. So we already did oral communications. We'll move on to consent items, just 2A, repeat five minutes from March 10.
Move approval.
Two half seconds.
Okay, Madam Clerk? Call vote?
Member Brightigan?
Here, yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Deidra Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Buie?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. So back to reconvene city council, the mayor, and we move on to consent items. Recommended that Items 3A through 3J be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any of the items. Do I have any requests to pull? Do I have a motion for the full balance?
Two motion? Kim Nguyen, second.
Call the vote?
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidra Nguyen?
Yes.
Unmute. Maybe his phone died.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
At this point, it's motion received, six yes votes. Councilmember Buie, are you online? We think Councilmember Buie was disconnected.
Yeah, that's what I figured, too. That's why I was kind of waiting to see if maybe he'll join back in before we plow forward here.
Forward, yeah.
Yeah. Fat, let us know if you're around. Are you there? Let's be patient a minute, hopefully he'll pop back up.
I'm also texting him in case he got disconnected, the call-in number and the ID number.
Fat Buie just rejoined the phone.
Councilmember Buie, how do you vote on consent?
Uh, yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, did you say, so we have unanimous, or did you say that already?
We do, we have unanimous. Seven, seven yes votes on the consent.
Great, thank you. That takes us on to Item 4, Items for Consideration. We do have two listed. Why don't we take them out of order? So we'll do 4B first. So 4B is Introduction and Reading of an Ordinance Adding Expedited Review of Electric Vehicle Charging System. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the title of the ordinance?
Yes. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove adding Chapter 18.57 to Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to electric vehicle charging systems. And Mr. Sandoval will give the report.
Thank you, Senator Clerk. Omar Sandoval, City Attorney. Mayors and members of the city council, before you is an ordinance that is required by state law to be adopted by the city. Although the city already processes electric vehicle charging station permits ministerially, the state law requires the city to have an actual ordinance stipulating to the ministerial and expedited review of these charging stations. This ordinance follows the model that was prescribed by the state of California, and so it complies with the state law. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But the recommendation is for you to introduce this ordinance for second reading and adoption at your next meeting. That's my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Please, go ahead, Kim.
No, I was making a motion to approve.
Oh, okay. Second. Brightigan, second. Um, any other, any other comments? Okay, we'll call the vote.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember De Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Buie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kay Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protam O'Neill?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, so we'll go on to Item 4A, Adoption of a Resolution Ratifying the City Manager/Director of Emergency Services Proclamation Declaring the Existence of a Local Emergency. Go to Omar.
This is Omar Sandoval, City Attorney. Mayor, members of the city council, consistent with the California Emergency Services Act and Chapter 608 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code, which implements that act, the city manager acting as the Director of Emergency Services proclaimed a local emergency in the City of Garden Grove in order to mitigate the crisis created by the spread of all the coronavirus disease known as COVID-19. The existence of the local emergency follows the declaration of the local health emergency on February 26, 2020 by the County of Orange, a declaration of a state emergency by Governor Newsom on March 4, 2020, and the declaration of a national emergency by President Trump on March 13, 2020. Both under the California Emergency Services Act and the Municipal Code, the city manager's proclamation of a local emergency is required to be reviewed, ratified, and continued by the city council by adoption of the resolution that is attached to your, to your agenda. So at this point, the city council can review the local emergency declaration and the orders that identify the actions taken by the city manager and additional orders in that resolution. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, colleagues, questions, comments, where do we go?
I have a motion to approve. Second, sorry, Caitlin.
Uh, Kim Nguyen, motion to approve, Tuha Nguyen, second. We have discussion. Seeing none?
Well, I have some, yeah, some, some, um, I think we need to discuss on Item Number 8. This is a, I think it is, the impact of coronavirus is huge. It's going to be a huge impact on everyone, on the renters, on the restaurant business, on, on all kind of businesses across the whole night yard. And so I think at the moment, we do not know how long it is going to, to be around. Hopefully, it won't be long. Maybe it will end in April or in, in, in May. But if it's stretched longer, it will be a huge impact, and it will cause everyone's lives upside down. Tremendous of issue is going to face us all. I sincerely hope that God will bless America and will bless us all, and that the coronavirus will end soon. But I think, I think we need to prepare for the worst. And, and so we need to figure out a way to help the renters, people who may struggle because they may be out of jobs, or they may be out of income to help to pay for their rent, as well as people who do not rent but own properties and may be forced to not be able to pay their, their mortgage. Same thing with, with business, restaurant, you name it, restaurant, you know, auto body shop, newspaper, television, the whole night yard. So I think, I think it is very important that we need to stay together and try to figure out a way to help each other throughout this huge emergency or disaster that, that is crowning up on us. I believe that this Section 8, the way that it's written, is not enough to help, you know, people who are going to be affected by us, by, by the coronavirus. And I think we, we should, like I mentioned earlier during the Housing Authority meetings, that, that I encourage the Director of Garden Grove Housing Authority to start the dialogue with HUD, you know, Housing and Urban Development Agency, to see if the federal can give us some, some funding so that we can help the renters to pay for their rent should they be affected by the coronavirus emergency. I think we need to do a lot more than just the language in this, in this section, you know, in this bullet number 8. Furthermore, I think some of the things that we scratched here is not going to, to happen in the next few weeks. I talked to a few lawyers, and they told me that the court system has already been a lockdown, and that there will be no, no cases being heard by the court. And therefore, there will be no eviction at all because the court is just, just closed. So we don't have to deal with this at this point. And I think I would like to explore with the council to see if we can form an advisory committee and expand the language in Section 8 so that we can have a comprehensive measure to help everyone who are affected by the coronavirus, from people who rent a house to the people who are currently having mortgage. I understand HUD is considering a 90-day stay on not, you know, doing foreclosure. But that's only for people who owe the, their mortgage to FMA and, and government loans. For private bank loans or mortgage, it is not yet having any relief. So I think, I think it is going, it's going to be something that will affect us all, and we need to have a comprehensive set of resolutions that call for the state, the county, and the government, the federal government, to, to help everyone. For example, we should ask the governor, you know, Governor Newsom, the state of California, the federal, to delay on, you know, consider delaying the, the property tax that is due in April 19, perhaps delaying the state tax. And, and also, city should consider delaying the, the other licenses, you know, such as the license for people who rent their properties, whether residential or commercial. They do have to pay the city for, for the permit fee. Now, all of those things need to be, need to be looked at. I'm also concerned about the fact that if the tenant is not able to pay utility bill, and if they move on, you know, move outside or what else, and, and refuse to pay those utility, then will the owners of the property have to pay on behalf of the tenants? Because it is, after all, their property, not the tenant property. All kind of those things need to be, need to be hammered out. And so I, I am contemplating whether we should debate on creating an advisory body to, to discuss this and expanding it so that we can communicate with the state, the county, and the federal to see, you know, what is it that we can do to help everyone who are suffering or maybe suffering in the near future. I'm finished, so everyone, I want to hear you.
Councilman Brightigan?
Please go ahead, George.
Yeah, um, you know, honestly, my thoughts, I think uh number eight is simply a meaningless platitude. It does nothing, um, the governor basically said that cities can vote on it. However, if the governor calls you a pink elephant, that doesn't mean it's a pink elephant. Um, the city of Garden Grove has no standing in this. The judges who issue the orders of eviction are the county judges. The deputies who enforce evictions are the sheriffs, not the Garden Grove PD. We have zero oversight, zero responsibility, and zero accountability for this. Um, not to mention zero jurisdiction and zero authority. So basically, it's a meaningless platitude. I do agree with Councilman Bowie that um it doesn't cover everyone equally. Um, your landlord, your commercial properties, whatnot. However, being that it is a meaningless platitude that holds no weight, um, I'm not willing to throw the baby out with the bathwater because the rest of the other seven items are awesome. And uh, I can't see delaying this because it's something that we need to to make happen. I um, I'm I'm kind of dismayed that something so meaningless and needless gets put into such a good resolution. Um, but I can't necessarily vote no on it just because of a meaningless platitude got put into it. End of message and rant.
Thank you. Colleagues, anybody else?
Uh, Councilman Bowie here. Uh, George, would you then uh would like to entertain a uh alternate motion to move I to separate item eight out in a in a separate uh resolution so we can vote on the remaining seven and then we continue to discuss number eight?
Sure, I'd second that. So I guess that'd be a substitute motion?
Yeah.
Ken, Ken, hi, Councilmember Kim Nguyen, do we have to take a vote right away or can we still make comments?
We we can discuss it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor O'Neill, just point of clarification, was there a motion on the original resolution?
There was a there was a motion, there was a motion by Kim Nguyen and a second by Tuha Nguyen for the original motion for the full resolution. Then there was a substitute motion by George Brightigan and seconded by Fat.
No, 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 Fat made this substitute.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got it backwards. So those two motion by, seconded by Councilmember Brightigan to separate out item eight.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you.
So now you're discussing.
So now we're discussing the old the substitute motion.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen, um, I just want to say, uh, since I was the one who advocated to include number eight per the governor's order, um, this is temporary through May thirty-first. It includes residential and commercial evictions and foreclosure due to non-payment. Um, it does not relieve a tenant the obligation to pay the rent or restrict a landlord's ability to recover the rent. Uh, California Apartment Association has sent out an email and is urging the same protocol that the governor has issued regarding more terms on evictions. Um, the Federal Housing Finance Agency announced on Monday that they would be uh granting mortgage forbearance and to owners of multi multifamily properties, as well as that the president has stated that HUD would suspend foreclosures and evictions. Um, there's been an online petition for the city of Garden Grove to institute a moratorium on evictions with the signatures of two hundred and six residents. Some of the comments that were included in that petition involve many folks being laid off right now as um or be resorting to one income per household and not being able to make their payment. Um, another thing that I would like to note is that um I have spoken to the office of Assemblymember Tom Daley, uh, the office of Senator Tom Umberg, and the office of Congressman Lou Correa regarding or advocating for landlords and property managers. It's on their their radar, they're working to bring this up to, you know, higher levels of government as a topic of discussion, um, to ensure that we're also thinking about landlords, property owners, and property management companies. But at this time, per the governor, this is something that's already instituted. And I think that, I mean, as as a gesture to our residents, this is something that they're asking for, something that would help ease the chaos um in uncertain times. And I think that we have an obligation as councilmembers to um to put forth something like this that would would help ease what's currently happening because of the pandemic. And I'll I'll finish my comments there.
Thank you, Kim, well articulated, anybody else?
Uh, I I just want to echo uh, uh, Councilmember uh Member Kim Nguyen, um, um, sentiment for for the tenant. And I think it's a it's a it's a just cause and the state and the federal is considering that uh and and take that very seriously. Uh, I think it is important that we we uh support each other uh throughout these audios. And that's why earlier I uh I urged the director of Housing Authority to work with HUD and to start the dialogue with with HUD so that we can have the funding to help um the people that are in distress because of the coronavirus pandemic. Uh, but I I think it is a uh, we we are jumping into something that is like, uh, Councilmember George, uh, Breitling mentioned earlier that uh this is an area where we have no jurisdiction in um enforcing it and and nor we are going to uh do any uh, you know, get involved into eviction. This is not something that belong uh to uh to Garden Grove City or or any other city. Um, the eviction had to start with a uh with a civil litigation where the owners had to file a uh request with the, you know, with the with the church. And the church can decide whether he grants the eviction or not. And secondly, if he grants the eviction, how much time he will give the tenant? All of that is being done uh through civil litigation. It has nothing to do with cities. Now, once the church order uh the uh, and if he orders the uh eviction, it's then the county sheriff who would then enforcing it. So Garden Grove had no part in it and because and we are not intent to uh even get involved in it. We are not going to uh do uh eviction for the or enforce eviction for the sheriff. And I do not believe then there will be any case for eviction anytime soon, not uh throughout the next few weeks at as a minimum because the courts have already decided that they are not going to hear any new cases. So um, so there will be no eviction at all. Regardless whether or not we we pass this resolution. I think what is more important to help the tenants, help everyone, is to create a task force to work with state um uh agency, county agency, and federal agency like the HUDs so that they can give the stimulus package to help tenants, whether commercial or residence, or residential, I mean, and helping other uh businesses in Garden Grove to uh to, you know, sustain and uh survive the coronavirus pandemic rather than this meaningless uh, you know, resolution. Because we have no way to enforce.
This is Councilmember Dega.
Please go ahead, Tuha.
Hi, um, I I I disagree with Councilman uh Fabry about meaningless meaningless because this is from the from the governors. And at the same time, we want to make sure that at this difficult time, we are stand by the residents who actually experience the difficult time. And most important thing about, while it's not our city, it's neighbor city also going through this, put it in moratorium of eviction as well. It's not about what we're gonna process or we can exercise a role or sheriff or our our police officer, this is about we are there for the residents during this time. I think that's what, why it is in the resolution. That's all I I have.
Okay, any other, any other comments before we take action on? George, go ahead.
Yeah, honestly, um, yeah, the co, like I said, it's a shame that so many of our elected officials haven't taken a basic civics class. Um, but uh unfortunately, that's where we're at. Um, I I firmly believe we shouldn't play in other people's sandboxes. This is a county um issue, not a city issue. However, like I said, I'm not willing to throw the baby out with the bathwater. Um, I, it's a good resolution, it's number eight, it's totally meaningless. So if we vote yes on it or vote no on it, it has absolutely no teeth. Um, so I could care one way or the other, um, if it's in there or not. Um, I do think it's kind of ridiculous to put stuff in there that we have no authority or jurisdiction over, um, just to make people feel good, I guess, is what we're trying to do. Um, even though it's completely meaningless. Uh, with that being said, I'm 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 good either way with it, um, so however you guys want to proceed.
Got it. Um, I I sense there's not unanimous support for the item eight that's on there. So presumably, that's how we get to separating that item out as a, as an item. If we were to do that, then what, we take an action on the rest and then we take an action separately on just that item? Legal counsel, is that a helmet?
This is Omar, so what you have on the table is a substitute motion. Which is to separate item eight for a separate discussion. Um, so I understand that motion to be to take number eight out of the current resolution. So you would have to vote on that first before considering moving forward with the original motion.
I guess this is, Councilmember Koppenschein, I guess I'm confused if there's, if if what is in there doesn't have any teeth, as as I'm hearing some people say, and that it's just maybe more of a formality and a gesture of support to the greater community. But I'm not sure I understand the need to to pull it and have further discussion on it. But I think it would be better just to to vote and move forward.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman O'Neill? Yeah, go ahead, John.
I just wanted to chime in, so I'm in favor of the original resolution. To me, item number eight is basically affirming an executive order, which is understood by the state and local agencies as being through May thirty-first, uh, some some uh comfort, so to speak, to all parties. Uh, so I I wouldn't entertain, I'm not looking at entertaining the substitute motion, I'd rather get the full resolution I have now. That's just wanted to say that before we started voting.
Okay. I'm I'm done. Got it, my um my hesitation is just that if we move forward on the full thing, then that means some councilmembers that um that may want to support the rest of it end up not supporting the rest of it because of the one item.
I'm good either way to you.
Okay.
This is Councilmember, really, can I can I just, Councilmember Koppenschein here? Which, whether or not we support that item number or not, and again, saying about it not having teeth or or whatnot, there is still dialogue and conversation that continue, that can continue to fat point. If he wants to take this a step further, his interactions and dialogue with HUD and a task force or whatever, all of that could still be a conversation that could be had at some point in time. Doesn't necessarily mean we still can't vote on that item today. Is that is that true?
Sure.
Yes or no, I mean, it doesn't really.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, we can we can enhance the resolution next week if we want to do and add another vote.
Right, right, I mean, whatever, I'm just I'm just saying that doesn't necessarily affect those ideas and and the need to to continue a dialogue, whether or not we pass what we have tonight.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion to separate out item number eight and that was seconded.
Ma- Mayor um, uh, Jones, uh, can I uh, let me check here a little bit? Uh, maybe I uh withdrew the original substitute motion on? But let me, let me um, uh, entertain some additional ideas and to see if, uh, you know, how my colleague would would think it's a good idea. I think the important thing here is, uh, I want to help the tenants. We are all in this together. Uh, if this coronavirus uh continue to uh spiral out of control, we all are going to be in a huge problem, not just a tenant, not just the business owners, uh, not just a landlord, but everyone, from the restaurant owners to uh auto body shop to uh, you know, you name it, the whole night yard, including the city itself. City will be in a big trouble because many not uh have enough revenue to uh sustain operation. So I I think it is important that that we all uh speak together and supporting each other. And that's why I was in uh in 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 favor of looking for a solution to help the 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 renters and 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 everyone uh in this in this vote. Uh, but I think it is, um, on the other hand, we also need to explore the possibility uh of helping others that the governors have not identified. Or maybe he has, but uh but he just haven't publicly publicly announced it. Uh, I think it is important for for us to add language, uh, to say that, yes, we we hear the Governor Newsom. Uh, I think it's a good move, but we also want the the state uh to do the task here. So let's let's add to the beginning of this paragraph on something along the line. And I I I had asked uh our city assembly to help me with uh with the verbiage a little bit earlier. Uh, so something along the following line, uh, to the beginning of the of the, you know, of of this clause. If and when the governors or state legislators extend the time for payment of property taxes and other fees or taxes established by the state. And also, I would like to add to the end of of this paragraph, something along the line of, additionally, the city will extend the debt for payment of local business taxes for business affected by COVID-19. Those those are the the two clause that I think if we add in, we will make this uh uh this this statement a lot stronger by showing that the city of Garden Grove um really care and really want to um, you know, advocate the state and everyone else, including ourselves, the city, to uh help people that may be affected by the coronavirus emergency. Uh, I I finished my 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 uh my uh deliberation and and I would would love to have my counsel to uh to chime in to see what else we can do.
So are are you pulling your motion then, your substitute motion?
Uh, yes, uh, by by uh by making suggestion that, you know, since uh council member is uh um is also want to see if we can do some baby steps, then maybe this would be the right thing to do by adding adding those those conditions into into this paragraph so that we do not seem to be just blindly help and focus only on one one factor rather than helping everyone across the board.
Uh, Mayor Steve Jones? Let's see, Mayor Steve Jones here, for for just point of order on a confusing teleconference meeting scenario anyways, can we just clarify, has the substitute motion been pulled? Like, is that off the table now and we're back to discussing the original motion?
Well, I'll pull my second if that matters. Well, I'll pull my second if that matters.
Okay. That, and did you pull the, did you withdraw the, the substitute motion?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the substitute motion goes away. We're back, just for point of order, we're back to the original item. There was a motion and a second, and let's go ahead and discuss, um, that in that context. Um, I think we get, uh, what, what you're suggesting, Fat, maybe coming here, is there anybody else with any ideas on sort of modifications to the, the original thing or not, or where, whatever you think?
Well, I'd like to see some kind of, sorry, Councilman Brightegum.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to see some kind of transmittal to the county. Since the county actually has authority and jurisdiction in this, that would be the best venue. It would be nice if they would, uh, actually adopt a measure similar to this. Um, you know, and, and so if we can communicate somehow to the county, uh, I don't know how you do that other than sending them a copy of the resolution, but that we would, uh, like them to get off their dust and actually do something meaningful instead of just sending empty plaudities like we're doing. That would be nice.
I, I, I just want to make sure that we want to, this is Councilman Fabulio. Uh, I just want to make sure that, um, whatever we do, it's just not just, just, just a messaging, that we actually doing something that are, uh, you know, you know, that are, are, are real. Like, like talking to the county, talking to the state, uh, talking to, uh, to HUD to see if they can, uh, give, uh, the funding, uh, for us to help those that are in it. Uh, in, instead of doing that, what we're doing here is we just say, hey, you know, we support the governors, uh, no eviction, uh, even though we have no jurisdiction over it. I, I think it's just, just an anti rhetoric. Uh, I, I think what's more important is work with, that the city take an active role in working with the county, working with the state, and working with the federal to come up with a real solution to help everyone involved. That's more meaningful. Now, the other item, the seven item, is within the city's jurisdiction, like script within citation. It's within the city's control, so we decided to suspend it. Uh, the water shut off, we decided to, to, uh, suspend it. The, um, um, you know, all of the other items, the seven items, we, i- i- it's in our control to, uh, uh, you know, to do something real to help the residents. And I, I think that is more important than, than this justice, uh, anti rhetoric, even though it has some, a little bit of meaning, but, but I think we got to do better than that. We got to do something real. We got to work with the county, with the state, and with the federal. That, that's all I meant.
This is Councilmember Peter.
Yeah, hold on, can we hear from, uh, City Manager real quick?
Yes, um, Councilman Bowie, uh, this is City Manager Stiles. Um, the city administration, uh, will certainly be, uh, willing to work with you and any other councilmembers that want to, uh, put together, we can work on some correspondence with, um, county, state, federal, and our legislators to advocate for, um, some of the things you're talking about. We'd be happy to, uh, work with you on that. I know time is of the essence and we would want to, uh, strategize to work closely with you that, oh, you know, even, even this week to prepare some of that information. That, those are my comments.
Thank you. Tuha?
Thank you, thank you, Scott. I, I think that, you know, you're not, you're not correctly, uh, you, you are correctly, uh, um, Councilmember Fat. But at the same time, with this resolution, we also do side by side or continue after this, it's to work closely with all, with the, with all the elected official that represent our city, that they can work at the state level and congressional to get funding. That is something we continue to do so, and we advocate not just for the rental, but we also advocate for the landlord, because everybody gets, everybody's life that's affected by this. So we don't single out. But for this resolution, we, I, I hope that we still continue to move forward and in on top of that, is to work with different agency.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have.
Um, this is Councilmember Claptonstein. Do we have to try and add this in?
Really quick reminder to mute, everybody, if you're not speaking, please mute. Go ahead, Stephanie.
No, I'm just asking just to try to kind of reorganize here and, and understand. So can we add that language in, or is that something that has just been recommended to our city staff? And, and I'm, I'm just kind of wondering how we take what Fat has brought up about maybe some stronger language, talking to the county, the state, and so forth, about all of this, taking it that step further. Does that have to be added in to the vote, or is that something that, that is separate that we all just agree upon moving forward with? I'm just trying to understand where we're at right now.
Yeah, Mayor Steve Jones here, and, uh, in listening in on all this, um, I think my suggestion would be that the originally contemplated wording in the thing was kind of well thought out and it tends to mirror what other cities are doing in this regard or reference to commercial and residential, we're talking about not just, you know, residential tenants, but also small businesses and that kind of thing. We're also talking about landlords, all these protections that we're trying to keep in balance. So I think throughout this dialogue, that's been sort of communicated. I think the wording in the initial motion, unless anyone disagrees, could stand with just sort of an understanding that there's directions of staff that, not to make this just hollow, but to also back it up with follow-ups and calls and some research on, um, just what's available out there to try and balance this out with funding mechanisms to help bail out, you know, landlords, tenants, businesses, um, in, in, in aggregate, you know, within our city to, to show concern and compassion for all, everyone who's struggling in our city.
So, so along those lines, uh, Mayor Jones, this is Councilman Fabulio, if I may chime in. Uh, so along of those lines, I think it would make the item number eight a little bit better by adding a, uh, a clause saying, uh, along the line of, uh, if and when the governor or state legislator extend the time for payment of property taxes and other fees or taxes established by the state. Uh, I think that show, yeah, because it, it, it's not right for the, for the, um, uh, governor and the state legislative to, you know, ask for, uh, for a relief of, uh, of, um, uh, rental payments. And, and then they still demand, uh, the property tax and, and other taxes paying on time , uh, while people are suffering. So I, I think it is, 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 it would be great if we could add that, that clause in. Uh, it shows that the city of Garden Grove is not just, just following, uh, staff, but we are ac- actually taking initiative to help everyone in our city. Uh, this, the statement that I, I read to the council, uh, had been, uh, you know, awarded by our city attorney, so I'm sure it, it is something that we could consider.
Fat, uh, Mayor Steve Jones here, um, I have a couple of thoughts on this. One, one is just that, you know, that, that the governor's original executive order in this regard and, and a lot of subsequent stuff that's come down the pipe on this, it's really geared towards trying to, um, effectuate some kind of stability during this uncertain time. So it's, it's trying to prevent tenants from ending up out on the streets or without their utilities turned on or, you know, that sort of thing, right? Um, it
Yes.
It may, it may or may not be a stretch to get into other items like property taxes. Like, if you don't pay your property taxes, don't pay it, but you're not going to get kicked out on the street in the middle of COVID nineteen by not paying your property taxes. So I, my thought is that the wording of the originally contemplated item is pretty tight. It could certainly be augmented, and I, I would, I would maybe suggest taking those other facets or those other variables up as part of that staff's, uh, direction to explore other items with the county assessor's office, with letters from you. Yeah, and, yeah, and, yeah, even, even letters from us or whatever urging other agencies to consider, um, voluntarily adopting some of the things like breaks on property taxes or whatnot that may come out of this. But where I, where I'm concerned that it may cross the line is just that, you know, property taxes, some of these other things would, would, non-payment of those items would not leave you out on the street next week or next month. It would just leave you delinquent on that account until you worked it out.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor O'Neill here.
Hi, John. Go ahead.
Just wanted to chime in. So when I read our sub beside of number eight, obviously it jumped out at me a little bit because we don't have any purview over evicting anyone or mortgages or anything like that. But, so I went ahead, I read the full executive order, I went to the penal code of California, I read the whole code. I would love everybody that's listening to know that that penal code and that reference is just till May thirty first, and regards to people that are directly affected by COVID nineteen that are in, uh, you know, it won't prohibit them from eventually paying their rent or their mortgage or forgiving anything. Um, you know, it, it, this isn't a carte blanche, like, hey, everybody can stop paying their rent or their mortgage. There will be foreclosures and there will be things happening, but if you're directly affected for the next couple of months, uh, there is a little, uh, support there. So I, I just wanted everybody to take a really hard look at that. And in my opinion, we're just, you know, supporting an executive order to get immediately relief to people that are directly affected. It doesn't preclude you from not paying your rent, not paying your mortgage, not paying property taxes, but it just gives those first people that are directly affected, uh, relief. So that's why I'm in support of the original resolution.
Okay.
Councilmember Keenwin, I just wanted to make a comment really briefly if I could.
Please.
I, I just wanted to say that I, I hope that we can push the original resolution forward, um, because I do also want to kind of call out the fact that, you know, city staff has done an amazing job. They are, you know, I, I know myself and the city manager, Scott, and I believe John O'Neill too, was on a, on a call late at night a couple of days ago with, on the governor's updates. Um, staff is constantly on calls with different entities. We're all working together, this is a time for solidarity and trying to figure out how best to help everyone because it's true, we're all going to be impacted by this. So I don't want to, um, take away from the fact that staff has been working really hard and working with several different, you know, entities in order to ensure that we're doing what we can and we're staying up to date on all the, the updates that are happening. This is happening all so fast and, 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 and we're trying to catch up with all the things that are happening. So as it stands right now, this is per the most current order. I think we should move forward with it as is, and if things progress and you see how long this goes and more orders come out, we can reconvene and deliberate at that point. But for, as it stands today, I think this is something that we need to take action on and do as is, and I'll end my comment there.
Thank you, well said. Um, are we prepared to go to vote on that note, or does anybody feel inclined that they really need to keep this going? Okay. Let's call the vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Brightegum?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Claptonstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem O'Neill?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, that takes us on to, uh, matters. So matters from councilmembers, um, we'll go, um, we'll go around the horn according to how we're listed on the agenda. So starting with, uh, Councilmember O'Neill, any matters?
Sorry.
John?
Yeah, I'm here, I was just trying to get my phone off and leave there for a minute. Uh, just wanted to say that, you know, I wanted to uplift everybody and give people hope that we are going to come out of this. It's going to be a tough road, but if we all come together, um, you know, we can solve a lot of these issues. Uh, we've come through a lot in this country and we will get through this virus. The main thing is to focus on the virus. Let's, let's kill that virus, let's get some, some vaccines and then, and, and stop people from dying, that's the main thing. And, and I just want to get people hope that we will come out of this. It's going to be a tough road, but we're gonna, we're gonna, I'm always the optimist and we're gonna pull out of this. So, uh, for all the folks out there, please keep educated, uh, read the executive orders, read the, the things that come out, uh, contact your council member, your, the mayor, the city. Uh, and, uh, mainly, you know, keep that separation, that's key. I worry about the old, older folks bringing it home to your own parents or grandparents, you know? You gotta keep that separation for right now. So just, uh, keep doing what you're doing, we're making a good, a good, uh, bite in it right now. I think we're doing well, if you look at where it started and where we're at in California, uh, forty million people. You know, three and a half million people in Orange County. Unfortunately, maybe we can close that meeting tonight in, in respect to that one member, that, that person that died in Orange County. Uh, but one out of a hundred. So anyway, I'll end my statement there, thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Brightegum.
Yeah, um, a couple of things. I met, uh, last Monday with, uh, General Laney of the, uh, Los Alamos Joint Forces Training Base, um, about, uh, a lot of, uh, big issue over here in District One with foul odors, uh, emanating from the base. Um, just clarification, there are no, uh, composting operations going on, on the base. Uh, it's not an actual composting thing they're doing, um, it's similar, they're making a wood chip product. Um, the company Aggraman has agreed to some mitigation efforts to, uh, make the air smell better. So what they're going to do is, uh, reduce land application volume from three hundred to two hundred, uh, tons daily, which is a one-third percent reduction. Uh, they're gonna ensure that most piles are not to exceed five feet high. The temperature of the piles is taken twice daily, won't be over a hundred and twenty-two degrees. Uh, they're gonna have a weather protocol based, uh, on forecast. And in the event of a weather event, Aggraman is going to address the feasibility of conducting land application operations on that day. Uh, they're gonna add two personnel to address visual contamination. Uh, and they're gonna maintain an odor summary log. Uh, not to mention they're going to immediately, um, peel the, the stuff that's shipped to them into the ground, um, so it'll be encapsulated with dirt. Almost immediately. Um, we're hoping that these, uh, mitigation efforts are going to, uh, help considerably. Um, and, uh, they're asking for some time to see if it's going to work or not. If, if it doesn't work, they'll, they'll seek further mitigation efforts, but for now, they're going to try this and see how it goes. Uh, just wanted to report out on that meeting with General Laney. Uh, also, um, like John said, you know, we're in this together. COVID nineteen, it, 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 it's going to be our new norm. Even when we return to, uh, somewhat normal operations, COVID nineteen will still be amongst us. We gotta learn, uh, take precautions, maintain distances, sanitize, uh, do all those proper things. But before any of that, we gotta look out for each other. And by doing that, what I'm specifically getting to is the hoarding of supplies. Please don't do that. It's ridiculous, there's no interruption in the supply chain. Um, we have medical personnel, first responders, police fire, paramedics, ambulance. Uh, they're working twelve-hour days now. And many of them are working when the stores are open, because most of the stores are closing early now. So they don't have an opportunity to wait in line for three or four hours to get into a store. By the time they get off work and get home, the stores are already closed. Uh, just by your weekly needs, what you need for that week to get by and be done with it, just like you normally did. There's no, there's no reason to hoard items and create these lines and create this, uh, panic situation. So, um, and that's, that's about it.
Councilmember Tuha Nguyen?
Yeah, um, I just want to say, um, you know, to the public that I encourage everybody to go, um, online to Orange County Public Health website, that website because they update constantly, um, updating every single minute. At the same time, uh, today is At the same time, uh, today is the Great American Takeout. So I would like to encourage, the night is not over, so, uh, we can, we can early take out to support local business, local, um, local restaurants. And at the same time, I just want to thank, thank you, uh, from the bottom of my heart for all the frontline, uh, workers, the medical personnel, the healthcare workers, the groceries, the truckers, and especially the first responders, the firefighters, the firefighters and the paramedics. Um, they are our defenders. Uh, I know many people work in their lab, work in the hospital right now, uh, with very limited supplies, um, but people working with great spirit because we know that we serve in the community. So I just wanted to say thank you to all and, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel member Bowie?
Uh, I just echo, um, um, some concerns about the, um, uh, you know, overstocking of supplies, uh, and also the, uh, price gouging, uh, by some, uh, some businesses. Uh, first of all, price gouging is a, um, um, you know, is violating the law that is subject to $10,000 fine and possible jail times. Uh, during the emergency, one cannot just, uh, uh, you know, increase the, the price significantly because of, uh, demand and supply alone. Um, I have talked to a few supermarkets, uh, locally and, uh, they are still in short supply of toilet papers and of price. Uh, I asked them when would they expect more supply rolling in? They said that they are ordering through normal channel and they do not get any updates on when those supplies will be delivered. Um, most distributor, uh, told them that they had to go through special delivery mechanism and, uh, right now the supply is running out, so everything had to be expedited and it will cost a lot more. For example, they give me an example that, uh, normally a shipment will cost, uh, $50 per pallet of price. Now they said that, uh, there is not enough, uh, truckings, uh, so, uh, in order to expedite it, it will cost $350 per pallet of price. And so, you know, if that is the case, then they would have to either increase the price significantly because they have to pay more for shipping. But they do not want to do that because they do not want to be perceived as they are price gouging. So they are just ordering through the normal process and whenever it gets here, it will get here, but they don't think it will get here in, in the near future. Same thing with, with, uh, toilet papers. And, uh, I went, I just to check out, I went to six different, uh, um, supermarkets as well as to Costco a few times a day, uh, yesterday. And, uh, those supply are not, are not anywhere in touch. And talking to them, they, Costco and other, other supermarkets, they do not know when supply will be, will be back in, in, in normal. So, um, um, I, I, I don't know what, what is going to happen. Uh, this, hopefully, uh, I'm not as, uh, optimistic as Councilman, uh, John O'Neill is. Um, if this thing doesn't end soon, uh, we all will be, will be facing a lot of, uh, difficulty. And, and I think with that, I think the city needs to take a more active role in working with, 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 uh, county, state and federal agency so that we can get help right way. Otherwise, we all will be suffering, not, you know, not just one sector or, or, or two sectors, but everyone will be suffering. And then in terms of the, uh, the governor, um, executive orders, it creates a lot of confusion for people, uh, in my, uh, in my, um, district as well as in Little Saigon. Uh, people just don't know how to interpret it, uh, what is considered essential business and what is not. Uh, there are so many, so many confusion out there. People spreading news and we do not know whether that's fake news or real news, but people are being given the ticket and I'm, I'm sure it's not happening in Garden Grove, but, uh, does it happen somewhere else in Orange County? Uh, it makes everyone nervous and, um, some elderly even, uh, frightened to go out, being afraid that they may be given the ticket, uh, maybe not in Garden Grove, but maybe in other, in another part of County. Um, can someone, uh, for example, can a, uh, uh, you know, what type of business can remain open, uh, like, uh, mattress? Is that considered essential? Um, I mean mattress store, uh, certain, certain electric store that sell TV and, uh, appliance, can they open or they cannot? Uh, does this only apply to, you know, those businesses that are exempted? Does it only apply to electronics store where they sell communication, uh, devices, cell phone or computers? Or does this extend, uh, to other electronics as well? So that, that's so much confusion. And I think, um, you know, we need to talk to the state, to the governor office so that we can understand what it is and relay the message to our residents. Um, you know, who can go out, under what circumstance they can go out and who cannot? And if they go out, can the family go together with four or five people in the car? If their friends, uh, need, need help and, and, uh, uh, getting somewhere, can someone volunteer to, to, uh, surprise them, uh, from place to place or that is also prohibited because they are not immediate family? Those kind of things, we don't know. We don't have a, a, an answer and a lot of time people calling me and asking me to, uh, gratify and I don't know how to, to give them, uh, a, a clear answer. And, uh, I, I, I would like to urge the, um, the resident to, you know, email to the governor office, email to the county office, and I would like, uh, the city, uh, manager, manager office to also do the same thing. We got to understand clearly what the executive order meant and what it doesn't mean so that we can advise our resident accordingly. And I'm, end of my, uh, you know, remarks.
Uh, council member Clompfenstein?
Thanks. Um, as council member Tuha, uh, Nguyen mentioned, the Great American Takeout was today. Um, this is an opportunity for you to grab some food, I hope many of you did, from maybe some mom and pop, uh, restaurants that we have here in Garden Grove. We really need to do our best to eat local and shop local through this time and, and take care of our small businesses in our city. Um, the city website is a wealth of knowledge. Not only are there lists of businesses that are, that are open for takeout, such as restaurants, just there's a lot of great information on there, factual information about, uh, COVID-19. I think it's important right now that we weigh the fear versus the facts. There's a lot of misinformation on Facebook and in other sources and we want to make sure that we're heading towards, um, different information sources that are actually giving us facts and incredible information, the CDC, the county health, and obviously we can visit our Garden Grove City website for that information as well. Um, you, we're hearing it every day, please stay home and please take that advice seriously because there's so many people that, that don't have that option, they don't have that choice. They're on the front lines, they're working hard, they're putting themselves and their families at risk to help people and to provide those essential services. So the least you can do is stay home and hopefully we can, uh, flatten the curve. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Counsel member Kim Nguyen?
Thank you. Um, I would like to just share some good news. I know at the last meeting I asked all of you to attend, um, the OCOG meeting. I'd like to say that you no longer have to do that. I've been appointed as the representative for District 18. So that's some good news. Hopefully I can get to work on Rena for us. Um, I'd also like to thank, um, sentiments that, or echo sentiments from other colleagues thanking our frontline, those working in public safety and on the medical healthcare field. A big, special, huge thanks to our Garden Grove staff and to our mayor for all the hard work you guys have put in the last couple of weeks. I know it's been endless meetings and calls and trying to organize and get this all together and ensure the safety for everyone here in Garden Grove. Um, also a quick reminder, when you're driving, if you, sorry, the dog. Quick reminder. A quick. When you're driving, if you see people in vests working on the street, please drive slowly. That's all.
Thanks, Jim. Um, legal counsel, we had a closed session earlier. Do we have any?
Yeah, so this is Omar Sanz de Los Didiya Journey. I, I do have, uh, two items to report out on. The first, uh, agenda item, Kestner versus the city of Santa Clara. City of Garden Grove is also part of the defendants. City Council did authorize the city attorney's office to coordinate defense efforts, um, with other public agencies that are involved in that litigation. On the second item, initiational litigation that pertains to PFA contamination and the city council did authorize, uh, city attorney's office and the city manager's office to, uh, to, uh, coordinate, uh, a, uh, an action and hire outside counsel in order to pursue, uh, litigation against, uh, manufacturers who created the PFA, um, contamination in Orange County basin where we take our water. That is all I have to report and both actions were unanimous by the city council.
Thank you. Uh, city manager Scott Sales, anything? No comments, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Um, per, uh, Mayor Protam O'Neill's, uh, good suggestion, we will adjourn this meeting in memory of the gentleman who passed away, the first Orange County, death being reported in Orange County. So sad to hear that. I'm sure we're gonna keep getting more statistics in the days and weeks to come. We need a brace for that and, um, be prepared. Uh, with that, we will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for cooperating in our first teleconference, uh, attempt at this new world order that we're, uh, dealing with. So thanks and we are adjourned.
110 111 112 113 114 115 116 117 118 119 120 121 122 123 124 125 126 127 128 129 130 131 132 133 134 135 136 137 138 139 140 141 142 143 144 145 146 147 148 149 150 151 152 153 155 157 159 161 163 165 167 169 171 173 175 177 179 181 183 185 188 190 199 200 201 203 204 205 206 207 208 209 210 211 212 213 214 215 216 217 218 219 240 242 244 246 248 270 272 274 276 278 299 300 301 302 303 304 305 306 307 308 309 310 311 312 313 314 315 316 317 318 319 320 321 322 323 324 325 326 327 328 329 330 331 332 333 334 335 336 337 338 339 340 341 342 343 344 345 346 347 348 349 350 351 352 353 354 355 356 357 358 359 360 361 362 363 364 365 366 367 368 369 370 371 372 373 374 375 376 377 378 379 380 381 382 383 384 385 386 387 388 389 390 391 392 393 394 395 396 397 398 399 400 401 402 403 404 405 406 407 408 409 410 411 412 413 414 415 416 417 418 419 420 421 422 423 424 425 426 427 428 429 430 431 432 433 434 435 436 437 438 439 440 441 442 443 444 445 446 447 448 449 450 451 452 453 454 455 456 457 458 459 460 461 462 463 464 465 466 467 468 469 470 471 472 473 474 475 476 477 478 479 480 481 482 483 484 485 486 487 488 489 490 491 492 493 494 495 496 497 498 499 500 501 502 503 504 505 506 507 508 509 510 511 512 513 514 515 516 517 518 519 520 521 522 523 524 525 526 527 528 529 530 531 532 533 534 535 536 537 538 539 540 541 542 543 544 545 546 547 548 549 550 551 552 553 554 555 556 557 558 559 560 561 562 563 564 565 566 567 568 569 570 571 572 573 574 575 576 577 578 579 580 581 582 583 584 585 586 587 588 589 590 591 592 593 594 595 596 597 598 599 600 601 602 603 604 605 606 607 608 609 610 611 612 613 614 615 616 617 618 619 620 621 622 623 624 625 626 627 628 629 630 631 632 633 634 635 636 637 638 639 640 641 642 643 644 645 646 647 648 649 650 651 652 653 654 655 656 657 658 659 660 661 662 663 664 665 666 667 668 669 670 671 672 673 674 675 676 677 678 679 680 681 682 683 684 685 686 687 688 689 690 691 692 693 694 695 696 697 698 699 700 701 702 703 704 705 706 707 708 709 710 711 712 713 714 715 716 717 718 719 720 721 722 723 724 725 726 727 728 729 730 731 732 733 734 735 736 737 738 739 740 741 742 743 744 745 746 747 748 749 750 751 752 753 754 755 756 757 758 759 760 761 762 763 764 765 766 767 768 769 770 771 772 773 774 775 776 777 778 779 780 781 782 783 784 785 786 787 788 789 790 791 792 793 794 795 796 797 798 799 800 801 802 803 804 805 806 807 808 809 810 811 812 813 814 815 816 817 818 819 820 821 822 823 824 825 826 827 828 829 830 831 832 833 834 835 836 837 838 839 840 841 842 843 844 845 846 847 848 849 850 851 852 853 854 855 856 857 858 859 860 861 862 863 864 865 866 867 868 869 870 871 872 873 874 875 876 877 878 879 880 881 882 883 884 885 886 887 888 889 890 891 892 893 894 895 896 897 898 899 900 901 902 903 904 905 906 907 908 909 910 911 912 913 914 915 916 917 918 919 920 921 922 923 924 925 926 927 928 929 930 931 932 933 934 935 936 937 938 939 940 941 942 943 944 945 946 947 948 949 950 951 952 953 954 955 956 957 958 959 960 961 962 963 964 965 966 967 968 969 970 971 972 973 974 975 976 977 978 979 980 981 982 983 984 985 986 987 988 989 990 991 992 993 994 995 996 997 998 999 999 1000 1001 1002 1003 1004 1005 1006 1007 1008 1009 1010 1011 1012 1013 1014 1015 1016 1017 1018 1019 1020 1021 1022 1023 1024 1025 1026 1027 1028 1029 1031 1032 1033 1034 1035 1036 1037 1038 1039 1040 1041 1042 1043 1044 1045 1046 1047 1048 1049 1050 1051 1052 1053 1054 1055 1056 1057 1058 1059 1060 1061 1062 1063 1064 1065 1066 1067 1068 1069 1070 1071 1072 1073 1074 1075 1076 1077 1078 1079 1080 1081 1082 1083 1084 1085 1086 1087 1088 1089 1090 1091 1092 1093 1094 1095 1096 1097 1098 1099 1100 1101 1102 1103 1104 1105 1106 1107 1108 1109 1110 1111 1112 1113 1114 1115 1116 1117 1118 1119 1120 1121 1122 1123 1124 1125 1126 1127 1128 1129 1130 1131 1132 1133 1134 1135 1136 1137 1138 1139 1140 1141 1142 1143 1144 1145 1146 1147 1148 1149 1150 1151 1152 1153 1154 1155 1156 1157 1158 1159 1160 1161 1162 1163 1164 1165 1166 1167 1168 1169 1170 1171 1172 1173 1174 1175 1176 1177 1178 1179 1180 1181 1182 1183 1184 1185 1186 1187 1188 1189 1190 1191 1192 1193 1194 1195 1196 1197 1198 1199 1200 1201 1202 1203 1204 1205 1206 1207 1208 1209 1210 1211 1212 1213 1214 1215 1216 1217 1218 1219 1220 1221 1222 1223 1224 1225 1226 1227 1228 1229 1230 1231 1232 1233 1234 1235 1236 1237 1238 1239 1240 1241 1242 1243 1244 1245 1246 1247 1248 1249 1250 1251 1252 1253 1254 1255 1256 1257 1258 1259 1260 1261 1262 1263 1264 1265 1266 1267 1268 1269 1270 1271 1272 1273 1274 1275 1276 1277 1278 1279 1280 1281 1282 1283 1284 1285 1286 1287 1288 1289 1290 1291 1292 1293 1294 1295 1296 1297 1298 1299 1300 1301 1302 1303 1304 1305 1306 1307 1308 1309 1310 1311 1312 1313 1314 1315 1316 1317 1318 1319 1320 1321 1322 1323 1324 1325 1326 1327 1328 1329 1330 1331 1332 1333 1334 1335 1336 1337 1338 1339 1340 1341 1342 1343 1344 1345 1346 1347 1348 1349 1350 1351 1352 1353 1354 1355 1356 1357 1358 1359 1360 1361 1362 1363 1364 1365 1366 1367 1368 1369 1370 1371 1372 1373 1374 1375 1376 1377 1378 1379 1380 1381 1382 1383 1384 1385 1386 1387 1388 1389 1390 1391 1392 1393 1394 1395 1396 1397 1398 1399 1400 1401 1402 1403 1404 1405 1406 1407 1408 1409 1410 1411 1412 1413 1414 1415 1416 1417 1418 1419 1420 1421 1422 1423 1424 1425 1426 1427 1428 1429 1430 1431 1432 1433 1434 1435 1436 1437 1438 1439 1440 1441 1442 1443 1444 1445 1446 1447 1448 1449 1450 1451 1452 1453 1454 1455 1456 1457 1458 1459 1460 1461 1462 1463 1464 1465 1466 1467 1468 1469 1470 1471 1472 1473 1474 1475 1476 1477 1478 1479 1480 1481 1482 1483 1484 1485 1486 1487 1488 1489 1490 1491 1492 1493 1494 1495 1496 1497 1498 1499 1500 1501 1502 1503 1504 1505 1506 1507 1508 1509 1510 1511 1512 1513 1514 1515 1516 1517 1518 1519 1520 1521 1522 1523 1524 1525 1526 1527 1528 1529 1530 1531 1532 1533 1534 1535 1536 1537 1538 1539 1540 1541 1542 1543 1544 1545 1546 1547 1548 1549 1550 1551 1552 1553 1554 1555 1556 1557 1558 1559 1560 1561 1562 1563 1564 1565 1566 1567 1568 1569 1570 1571 1572 1573 1574 1575 1576 1577 1578 1579 1580 1581 1582 1583 1584 1585 1586 1587 1588 1589 1590 1591 1592 1593 1594 1595 1596 1597 1598 1599 1600 1601 1602 1603 1604 1605 1606 1607 1608 1609 1610 1611 1612 1613 1614 1615 1616 1617 1618 1619 1620 1621 1622 1623 1624 1625 1626 1627 1628 1629 1630 1631 1632 1633 1634 1635 1636 1637 1638 1639 1640 1641 1642 1643 1644 1645 1646 1647 1648 1649 1650 1651 1652 1653 1654 1655 1656 1657 1658 1659 1660 1661 1662 1663 1664 1665 1666 1667 1668 1669 1670 1671 1672 1673 1674 1675 1676 1677 1678 1679 1680 1681 1682 1683 1684 1685 1686 1687 1688 1689 1690 1691 1692 1693 1694 1695 1696 1697 1698 1699 1700 1701 1702 1703 1704 1705 1706 1707 1708 1709 1710 1711 1712 1713 1714 1715 1716 1717 1718 1719 1720 1721 1722 1723 1724 1725 1726 1727 1728 1729 1730 1731 1732 1733 1734 1735 1736 1737 1738 1739 1740 1741 1742 1743 1744 1745 1746 1747 1748 1749 1750 1751 1752 1753 1754 1755 1756 1757 1758 1759 1760 1761 1762 1763 1764 1765 1766 1767 1768 1769 1770 1771 1772 1773 1774 1775 1776 1777 1778 1779 1780 1781 1782 1783 1784 1785 1786 1787 1788 1789 1790 1791 1792 1793 1794 1795 1796 1797 1798 1799 1800 1801 1802 1803 1804 1805 1806 1807 1808 1809 1810 1811 1812 1813 1814 1815 1816 1817 1818 1819